Good morning and thank you for joining us this evening. I'm sorry, good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. It might be one of those nights. It hasn't even been that long. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson, here.
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 Black.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Lieutenant Tammy Moore representing the Salvation Army.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, whenever I have the privilege to come before you, I'd always like to give a little quote from our co-founders of the Salvation Army. And this one is from our co-founder Catherine Booth. And it says, "In the final analysis, there is no other solution to a man's problems but the day's honest work, the day's honest decisions, the day's generous utterance, and the day's good deed." That's great. Father God, I want to lift up each and every person in this room today, but especially the leaders and the decision-makers before me. Lord, I just pray that at the end of this meeting, at the final analysis, will be of honest and good decisions made. I just lift up this whole meeting to you, Lord. And, Lord, I also want to lift up Heidi to you, which today is her birthday. And Father, we just ask that you just pour many blessings upon her today and that this be a day that even though she's here, having to make some decisions and with all these fine folks, that, Lord, that she just be very blessed by the end of this night. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. That is right. Thank you very much. Heidi is indeed Heidi's birthday today, and so...
It was me.
I don't know who told her, but I think she's definitely in tune, maybe, with the man upstairs.
[laughing]
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification meeting and regular council meeting of September 6, 2018, the special meeting with Golf Advisory Board, tour of the Riverside Golf Course of September 12, 2018, work session and executive session of September 13, 2018, Fire Department Master Plan Meeting of September 18, 2018, and the City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting from September 20, 2018. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of September 2018. Joyce, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the Payroll and Material Claims Report for the month of September. Payroll and material claims totaled $6,236,630. Payroll-related claims, $3,459,156. We had 698 employees at the end of the month. We had changes in filled positions of a decrease of two in the full-time status, a decrease of four in the part-time status, and a decrease of 57 in the seasonal part-time status, for an overall decrease of 63 filled positions. Bender claims totaled $2,777,473. Our large vendor claims, I've highlighted a few key claims, Viking, Sives, Midwest Incorporated, $188,973. This is for the Street Department. It was a 2018 Kenworth Dump Truck. DL Beck Incorporated, $172,495. Parks Department, this was for the Portniv Greenway ITD Project. Mickelson Construction Incorporated, $128,533. Streets and Water, that's for asphalt. Parks Department, it was the topsoil for the wetland project and City Hall parking lot. Signature Equipment Corp., $105,902. Sanitation, the side loader for a new Peterbilt truck. The Jackson Group Peterbilt, $101,520. Sanitation, this was for the Peterbilt Retriver Truck, which is the new truck they have with the arm on the left side. Thank you. The large vendor claim totaled on the report explains 85.07% of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I presented the September purchase card activity. We had 1,518 transactions that we processed totaling $437,195, and we had 169 cardholders use their card. We had 10 purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and we've listed the types of expenditures for your review. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We move on to C, ADA Grievance Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Terry Fredrickson to serve as a member of the ADA Grievance Committee. Mr. Fredrickson's term will begin October 5, 2018, and will expire October 5, 2020. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ali Gonroy to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, representing the Zoo Idaho Zoological Society. Mr. Gonroy's term will begin October 5, 2018, and will expire October 5, 2020. E, Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Caesar Sagaldo to continue his service as a member of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Mr. Sagaldo's term will begin October 9, 2018, and will expire October 9, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Madam?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. We do have one proclamation, but before we start that, I saw P.T. Anderson walk in. How are you doing? Thank you for being here. You're here for scouts? What are you here for?
I'm here for school assignments.
School assignments.
If you know someone.
That's just as good as scouts, probably better for a grade, for sure.
This young lady over here is for school.
We've got a young lady for school here as well, for an assignment? Fantastic. Are you two in the same class?
No.
Not at all.
Where are you?
Online, high school.
What year?
Uh, no.
She's all.
Online, but different schools. Fantastic. And we've got somebody back here, too. Are you at school, too?
Yeah. Franklin Middle School.
Franklin Middle School. Fantastic. Thank you for being here. This is great. Do we have another one right behind you? She might be...
She's here with me.
Oh, she's here with Councilman Bray. She's dang cute, for crying out loud. We need her sitting up here. Anyway, fantastic. Thank you for being with us tonight. We do have one proclamation. The proclamation will be read by Councilmember or Council President Jim Johnston, Fire Prevention Week.
Whereas the city of Pocatello, Idaho is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pocatello, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires, and whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year, and whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to the U.S. Fire Department was 10% higher in '16 than in 1980, and whereas Pocatello residents should identify places in their homes where fires can start and eliminate those hazards, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Pocatello residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas Pocatello residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm when it sounds and respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place, whereas Pocatello residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Pocatello Fire Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Pocatello residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fires, especially in their home, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Look, Listen, Learn, Beware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," end quote, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now, therefore, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the city of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim the week of October 7 through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week in Pocatello, and urge the citizens of Pocatello to become aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire and/or other emergencies, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Pocatello Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2018. Signed, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the city of Pocatello.
There were a lot of wear-asses.
You wrote it.
Thirteen of them, if I count our gratitude. The banker's dozen, wear-asses, this is Fire Department, sure. How are you? Want to say what you did?
Just on behalf of Pocatello Fire Department, thank you, and appreciate it. And it's a pretty busy week and a busy month for us in fire prevention. I know it's a weekly proclamation, but it kind of goes on all month of October.
And thanks for all you've done this week in terms of wearing pink.
You're welcome. And I was going to say, that's a good-looking shirt. I should have put mine on.
Should I?
Yeah.
Stretch kind of tight, Jim.
Thank you.
I should have bought it sooner. Like, yeah, it wasn't any smaller, but don't my abs look good?
It looks great. All right, thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item Five, which is a calendar review. Council may take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On October 11 at 9:00 a.m. will be a work session. October 18 at 3:00 p.m. will be Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting. October 18 at 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting. October 18 at 6:00 p.m. will be a City Council meeting. Other events, sanitation department collection trucks will continue on schedule on Columbus Day, October 8. City offices will also remain open on this holiday. Early voting continues at Bannick Elections Office, 141 North Sixth Avenue, the Old Jail. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The last day to vote early is November 2. Historic Preservation Committee Events, Mountain View Cemetery. October 12, scavenger hunt from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. October 13, Stones Two Stories Historical Tours, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tours given hourly. Contact Terry New at (208) 234-6500 for more information. As a reminder, Zoo Idaho is open on weekends only until October 28. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Six. The public hearing, Community Development Block Grant Needs. This time has been set aside for council to accept testimony from citizens and organizations on any housing or non-housing community development block development needs they have identified. The council will also review written statements if written statements of intent to apply for program year 2019 community development block grant funding and organizations may present their proposals for funding. I declare the public hearing open. That was a mouthful for me tonight. I blame Adam.
Everyone does. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Adam Lane. I'm the CDBG Program Manager in the Planning and Development Services Department. As a part of the citizens' participation process, this needs hearing is a beginning step in the funding application process for program year 2019, Pocatello's 23rd year as an entitlement city. At this time, there is no adopted federal budget. As a result, the exact amount of funding for program year 2019 is unknown. For purposes of planning, staff is using the city's 2018 allocation of $469,315, which includes anticipated program income. In your packets, there are statements that intend to apply for the upcoming cycle from two agencies, Neighbor Works Pocatello and Aid for Friends. Staff is working to ensure these requests are eligible under HUD program guidelines. To meet the priority goals of the city's five-year consolidated plan, CDBG staff intends to recommend funding approval for the five highest priority needs as identified in the plan. These needs include housing rehabilitation, including lead-based paint hazard control, affordable housing creation, public infrastructure improvements, public facility improvements, and public services. Funding will also be requested for program administration and fair housing activities. Preliminary requests for funding total approximately $534,000. If federal funding levels remain consistent, not all requests will be able to be accommodated. Staff will work with the advisory committee to identify projects to meet the highest priority needs benefiting the most residents. Final applications for program year 2019 funding are due October 22, 2018, and a copy of all applications will be provided to you for your use during the required public comment period, as well as your eventual action on the recommendation by your Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. That completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those, and at this time, members of the public are encouraged to give their input on housing and community development needs.
Council, any questions? Have there been any written correspondence that we've not seen?
There hasn't.
Okay. Have we had any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is B.J. Stenzland. I'm the Executive Director at Aid for Friends, and I submitted a statement of intent to apply for architectural and engineering services in support of the renovation work for a new facility. On September 19, an offer was accepted by the seller from Idaho Housing and Finance at 209 East Lewis. So we are now in that stage of due diligence, and we're hoping that that becomes a secured property. It's ideal for our purposes. And the architectural engineering portion for renovation is essential. I want to...
B.J., that facility is...
Okay, my time. Go ahead.
That facility is... The former use was what? Was that the old city hall?
Okay. My time's going to go. I'll tell you.
You're on my time.
Stay back over there. You're good.
I'm sorry. All right. It was built in 1957. It was the original city hall, and in fact, the chamber, city hall chambers are still intact with the curved desk, so it's still there. And then for many years, it was used as the Idaho State Police Forensic Lab. So, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Very quickly, I just wanted to tell you that I did a little... Oh, I'm okay. A little bit of research. In the past, I've always just gone and filled in the boxes, gotten the intent, and this time I decided to look a little bit deeper into CDBG. I only had a few minutes this afternoon, but to find out what our national objective is, because we apply under the primarily low and moderate income residence. So what really does the statute say? And it sets forth the primary objective of the program as the development of viable communities by the provision of decent housing and suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities, primarily for persons of low and moderate income. When I read that, I kind of got a better idea of what CDBG really does for our community and what the national objective is. I looked at how does that fit in with our city plan, our consolidated plan, and we are under Priority Number Four, which is a high priority that states programs and services that assist persons and families who are homeless, those with disabilities, with heart illness, or special needs. One of the goals is to provide supportive services and facility improvements. Our project, our plan, fits exactly what CDBG suggests that it's used for, for viable communities. And I have 21 seconds. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any others supporting the application?
Hi, my name is Shawna Engen. I'm the CFO from Neighbor Works Pocatello. Mark's supposed to be here tonight, however, it's his 10-year anniversary, so he decided to slough off.
Thomas, no excuse. We've got a birthday girl here, for crying out loud.
She's here! I know, I know.
In ten years.
Well, yeah. So, he wanted you to remind, or wanted me to remind you that there's a lot of stuff of, there's a lot of things that we, of what we do. We do the owner-occupied rehab loan, which we are asking for CDBG support for the service delivery. We actually have our own loan funds, and so we actually match the service delivery by about eight to one, because we bring about $200,000 to the table for the loan fund, and we're asking usually about $750 per loan for the service delivery. We also, and we do that for people who are 80% or below median income, and why we do it is that there is a lot of, a lot of houses in Pocatello that need the help for either the furnace is out, or the roof is out, or the roof is bad, or they need new windows, and so we help them do that. We make sure that the loan is affordable, so we can, we usually do a 15-year loan, but we will move that out further if it needs to be more affordable for the person. We also sometimes just make it be a 0% deferred loan, which means that we don't get any money until they sell the home eventually, because we try to make sure that they can afford this payment, or maybe they just need to improve their house. One of our other problems, our other programs is the infill construction that removes light, and we put a new home on that, on that, on that piece of land. One of the advantages we have is it increases the tax base. We've, our last report that was about six years ago showed that we had about $150,000 in taxes. We also had $9 million of improvement in the tax base, and we're going to be looking at that report again, and hopefully that will be a bigger report for, because this is our 25th year at Neighbor Works Pocatello. And so we've been around a while, and I think we do a lot of good work. One of the questions I was really hoping to just point out for the comprehensive plan is we need more contractors, especially lead-certified contractors, and so I would really hope that maybe the council might look at being able to support the comprehensive plan and maybe look at what we need to get more contractors in.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, then I don't know, did you have anything you would like to say in rebuttal to any of the things that have been said?
I have.
Okay, then I declare the public hearing...
I have a question for Adam. May I ask?
Phew, that was close. I had my hand on the gavel.
Are there other potential applicants?
Well, no, not at this time. The deadline for notices of intent to apply for 2019 funds has passed. I will add that we do have program year 2018 funds currently available for agencies to apply for, for more immediate needs.
Are there people or organizations that we have supported through this in the past that did not apply?
Yes and no. So because of the, we changed the process this year, making funds more readily available, you know, now, agencies that we've helped in the past are currently applying for those funds and didn't apply for 2019 funds.
We haven't excluded anyone, then?
We have not.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Superb. Thank you. Any other questions before I... Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. It's too late now if you have a question. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, as For Golf Concessions Agreement 2018 Seasoned Financial Obligation Revisions. Council may wish to consider the following staff recommendations concerning 2018 Seasoned Financial Obligation Revisions with For Golf Incorporated for the Golf Concession Agreement and Golf Concessionaire. A, reduction in base payment amount due from $107,500 to $92,500. B, reduction of water utility service payment amounts due from $1.04 per 1,000 gallons to $0.93 per 1,000 gallons, up to a maximum of $135,000. And C, water utility service payment credit of $63,750 for expense incurred resulting from ongoing water delivery issues at Riverside Golf Course. This topic was discussed at September 13, 2018 work session, and council directs its staff to renegotiate the financial obligation terms.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Adamson.
We have discussed this quite a bit at our work session and also our work session clarification meeting, and it has come to my attention that we may have an issue with B by changing the utility rate, but I believe it is the intent of the council to still provide some relief to the golf concessionaire. So I would like to propose that we strike the existing text of B and replace it with a water utility service payment credit of $15,000, and I would then move that we approve the agreement with that change. Is that okay for motion? Or do I need to add any?
Just include that it's a 2018 season.
Oh, yes, and that it is for the 2000, that those reductions and credits are for the 2018 season.
I see. Okay, so we have, so your motion is to approve A, B, and C with the B as a $15,000 credit, not messing with water rates.
And I believe that should work out to be the same as what we were calculating.
Okay.
Of my understanding.
Perfect. Thank you. I would agree with that. Thank you. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Madam?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight. An ordinance abandoning and vacating a portion of right-of-way of the right-of-way of Wedgeway Portniv Golf Estate subdivision and providing that the public right-of-way herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner and developer, Juniper Hills Country Club Incorporated, and Joseph C. Jensen, in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-311 and 50-1306A. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilwoman Adamson.
I move that the ordinance, Agenda Item Eight, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurid?
Yes.
Benon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating a portion of the right-of-way of Wedgeway Portnoy Golf Estates subdivision located in the southwest quarter of Section 17, Township 7 South, Range 35 East of the Boise Meridian, Bannock County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing that the public right-of-way herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner and developer, Juniper Hills Country Club Incorporated and Idaho Corporation, and Joseph C. Jensen, in accordance with Idaho Code Section 50-311 and 50-1306A, as deemed to be in the best interest of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurid?
Yes.
Benon?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Nine is Discussion Items. We have not had anybody sign up for the discussion items, so we appreciate your attendance tonight, and with that, we are adjourned.